We got... We're losing the top piece of the city. It's a little complicated. Joint City Council project. It's turned out to be very expensive.
I just took over campus. That's not my field at all.
No money in this program. It's not just for the future. But we put in a million dollars. It's a real one. With the whole amount of dollars that we have, it's take running. You know? It would be our best part if we could work ten percent. We're not totally closed. We've got the ability to do more. So it's a gamble. It would be bigger fields. Obviously, doing public much. We'll share one of them.
Thank you.
It's not all. It's not all that right. TJ, you're in there last. Hopefully, it's been taken off. Well, maybe I'm going to get it. I can't.
How are you?
Good.
We're going to get it. 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 We're going to get it.
We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. We're going to get it. This is the thing that's very common. And after last hour, we're actually out of time. We're going to get it. 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 I like the Lord going here. Appreciate you for allowing us to sit here. Yeah. I'll save you. 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 Hi. Good rest. Thank you. We can use the little voice. Yeah, one of those. We can use the little voice. Yeah. We can use the little voice. Yeah, one of those. We can use the little voice. Yeah. We can use the little voice. 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 We're Christian. We're Christian. We're Christian. What was your question? I'd like to ask that you can see. Actually, okay. Thank you. Amen. Yeah. Thank you. I guess it's a pretty good thing. I said, "No, it's a great idea." She's happy with that. She's happy with that. She's happy with that. Yeah. Thank you. I guess it's a pretty good thing. I said, "No, it's a great idea." She's happy with that. She's happy with that. This is my building. 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 Yeah, it'll help. I know that. That's what that's what's on my mind. John is now the memory. He said, "He told me he used to do that stuff." Would you guys just plug? All I brought is up on here. Okay. It didn't work well either. I probably get it back.
If you can, if you can explain to him today and what we're looking for so that he can give us, maybe get us, maybe get it to us. Or whatever. I'll let y'all work it out.
Okay. I told you all of my staff that I'm out of there. You're not the last. I'm back. I'm with you. I've got it.
Let's go ahead and call a meeting order, please. This is our council work session. Okay, we're in the second 2012. We'll call a meeting to order. And if you would, stand as one of the defensible allegiance and remain standing in the kitchen.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Gerald Albrecht. Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the time that you're giving us to, to consider everything that's going on in our city. We know that it's important. We appreciate everyone who is here at this meeting tonight. We ask that you give us the, all the information that we need to make correct decisions about the way the city should grow. All these things we pray. Your name.
This time I will ask for a question. Consider, consideration to approve the agenda. We do have one change we'd like to make. It's to move section nine C, which is the recognition of exceptional police action. Move it to aggregate the distance after number four.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? Not a favor, sign of saying aye?
No.
All right. We welcome everyone here. Have a nice crowd. A lot of business to be done. Could be a lengthy meeting. Hopefully not too long, but we want to get a lot done tonight, hopefully. I would ask our city manager this time to handle the recognition of the excellent, of excellent police action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In turn, calling our interim police chief, Mr. Vande Zandy, to handle this recognition.
Thank you, mayor and council, and all those in attendance. Normally, I, I'm under the gun if I'm up here, so I'm usually not too happy about it. But this is one of those opportunities you get as a chief of police to, to give some praise to the men and women that work for you. And that's exactly what we're here for this afternoon or this evening. Normally, in a year's time, or even two or three years' time, we probably end up having maybe one or two events that are worth recognition that we can present in a public forum like this. Of those, the lifesaving award is probably the, the least likely event that we ever get a chance to, to have an opportunity to recognize individuals for. And it's, it just so happens that in the last month or so, well, I guess in the last month, we were lucky enough to be in the right place at the right time and be there soon enough to actually have three officers with us tonight that I'd like to recognize just briefly for the action that they took on those two nights that resulted in the saving of two individuals that are members of this community. So if you don't mind, I'd like to call up Officer Ryan Campbell, Sergeant Michael Hales, and Officer Delman. And then I'll tell you briefly what they did, because it'll take a minute to get up here. They're a little nervous. On January seventh of this year, we received another one call from a woman who said that her husband, she woke to find her husband unconscious. Because of the condition that she was in, she was unable to perform any sort of lifesaving exercises. She called 911. Sergeant Hales and Officer Ryan Campbell arrived. They made entry into the apartment. I guess it was an apartment. But they made entry into the house. They went upstairs. They found the male unconscious and unresponsive and not breathing. They moved the male to the floor. They began CPR. They revived him once. They rolled him over on his side in order for him to clear his airway. He stopped breathing again. They rolled him back, on his back, began CPR again until fire and EMS personnel could arrive, at which time the victim was alert and talking, I believe, actually. He was transported to the hospital and he's in fine condition right now. So that's the first incident. The second incident occurred a few days later. We responded to a house fire. We're stealing firemen's glory here. Dean's sort of upset about it, but we got there before they did this time. We had a house fire on the south end of the city. Our officers responded. When they got there, our officer, Officer Delman, and a Holly Springs officer showed up at the same time. They could not make entry. I think Delman tried to kick the door in and wasn't able to do it. He did one of them movie kicks where you try to... But he sees a big guy. They realized they couldn't kick the door in, so they went around back, got the door off of the back of the porch, entered the house. The house was full of smoke. They ducked, made it, made their way to the front of the, the house. They found the male unconscious, laying on the, on the ground at the front door. Opened the door just in time for the fire department to get there and, and help them extricate the male from the residence. And he ended up being just fine, too. So this really is an unusual occurrence. I think in the five years that I've been here, we've only given one other lifesaving award. To have two of them occur in such a short period of time is a testament to, well, is a testament to the response that we're able to provide to the members of this, this community. And I think it, it speaks well for the men and women that work here. Anyway, I'm up here right now to present them with these certificates. So do we need to press on a photo op thing? Or how do we want to do this? Please. Please, yeah. Do it up. Do it up here? Somebody got a camera? Erica, you got a camera?
Please.
Okay, come on up here. Hold on. Delman, come on up here. All right, there's a way to do this here. There's a way to do this. Sergeant Michael Hales.
Congratulations and thank you very much.
Appreciate what you did. Yeah, especially the wives and kids. I forgot to mention those. Obviously, they wouldn't be half as good as they are without the wives and the kids present. So thank you very much.
Hey, our 10-minute public in good period. We have Stephen Lewitt.
Stephen Lewitt, I live in Prominence Port subdivision. I'm president of H O A. Spoke at the awards before about a month ago. In regards to the letter to the editor from City Council, Bill Bryant, about the city streets, and I live in private street community in Prominence Port. And I'll quote, he says, "A scheme of ways to make the taxpayers pay for their private streets in their exclusive neighborhoods." I'm not sure Mr. Bryant is. Can you, can you explain to me what you meant by that? Because I don't know if I live in an exclusive neighborhood or not. And I don't know what makes it exclusive, but I got to pay for my own city, my own streets in the city camp. I pay my own taxes to the city camp, and I don't get the same benefits as my next neighborhood on the street.
So what's your question, sir?
How, how does, how does the council scheme of ways to make taxpayers pay for my private streets?
Tell us exactly what's going on. There's been a committee formed right now to privatize all the streets that were designed as private streets, that were built as private streets.
They're never supposed to be private streets.
Well, that's not the one that I was referring to, sir. There are several miles of private streets that were designed and built as private streets. It's stated on the plan as private streets. They're not built to city of Kansas standards.
You were not referring to Prominence Port subdivision or any other subdivision that's got private streets?
The letter was exactly what it said. It's precisely what it said.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, out of Toby Latimer.
My name's Toby Latimer. I'm the president of Camp Disney Baseball. And just wanted to be here tonight. I knew that we're going to be talking about the park. I just wanted to have a little bit of influence on, you know, how it was designed overall as far as killing baseball park goes. So that's really all I had. Okay. I guess when I get to the layout part of it, I, I had met with Robbie originally on the Edwah River Park and, and was, was involved in doing the design of what best fit the park, best fit the park in itself. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
I'm sure you'll have, have more input as, as this process goes along there, for sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Senator. All right, chat.
City's agenda. We have the minutes of the January 30th and December financials. Oh, I'm sorry. It says 30 January. About 1:26 up here. January 26th, yeah, and the December financial. I think we need to pull the financials off first, because I think we got some adjustments that need to be made in those that they may not reflect accurately at this time what, what they should. But so I, I want to suggest that we pull that one off, but that we ask for a motion to approve the, the minutes as they're in the package.
Go move.
Second. Have a second. Any other discussion about the minutes? Not a favor, sign of saying aye?
No.
I oppose no. All members voting for motion. The financials, I, I would ask that maybe, and certainly it could be up to your desire there, as to whether or not we do any action there. But I, I think there's some adjustments that, that Nathan needs to make in those to accurately reflect some of it, particularly the water and sewer revenues. So Nathan, would you?
See here? Yes.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Would you, would you agree with that? We need to make some adjustments to that before we finalize that and have it at the next meeting?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with that?
Okay.
Hey, hey. Mr. Mayor, while you're on that subject, does anything help? Did anybody just notice? Did all of? Anything else in those financials that anyone noticed that might have helped?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Question is, has the late fee charge in the water sewer been reinstated now that we've reached a stable condition in our billing?
Has the late fee been reinstated now that we have gotten back on the regular routine on our billing process?
That is contingent upon what the council does with the code and any modifications that the council seems necessary.
Okay. So in essence, okay. It depends on what we do with that proposal that's in this package on the water, sir. Under all business, we have to review the Edwah River Park changes and some of the budgetary effects there. Architect Robbie Bryant and Bill Nichols.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if, with council's permission, I'd like to lead off and introduce the delegation we brought here. Is that acceptable to you?
I'm sorry, I need to speak first.
Yes, sir, I'll make. I'm Harry Johnston, County Commissioner for North Cherokee County. We brought actually a whole delegation out of here tonight. We have on the front row, I think you know Robbie Bryant and Bill Ackles, our program manager. Robbie's with HBR Architects and Engineers. They will present to you in just a moment the, the proposed plans both at the Unibeta Road site and at the Edwah site. Revised plans at the Edwah site, subject to your consideration. And then we also have Brian Reynolds. You may or may not know Brian. Take him over there. He's our Recreation Director for the county. And our County Manager, Jerry Cooper's here. And our, our Chairman, Buzz Aaron, should say he might have come by, but I don't think he, he made that. If I could just take a minute, just kind of summarize where I think we are and what, what we propose to put on the table and what we discussed here and there, but not really formally. I'm glad to have this afternoon to discuss it. We have, as part of the, of the $90 million Parks Bond referendum program, we earmarked $7 million, had earmarked $7 million for a joint project with the city camp. One, one life for doing it every other city as well, according to their size of the city. This was proposed by the city to build a park down on Edwah River across from Heritage Park. One of the centerpiece elements of that park was the baseball fields, primarily to serve the programming units of the Duesy and Baseball Association. As you know, as it turns out, that is not a good place for baseball fields. They're very expensive to build there because they have to be raised to get them out of the playground. That also confines the, the size to a less than fully acceptable size. So in looking for solutions, it came up that the county has property out on Unibeta Road adjacent to the existing Kenyaskew Park. We bought in part, in this program, more property than we can or will be able to develop out of the $90 million. But seeing like $90 million, you've got to be able to do everything in the world, but it turns out we can't. And so that, that property will, will not be developed otherwise for at least 10 years, I would say, until there's some new and as yet unidentified revenue stream to pay for. But the city began, we, I heard that the city was looking for another site to consider putting in the baseball fields that might be better suited. And, and I believe a red and soap box, Helen Eric, that was first I got that saw. Probably one of the Disney Inc. people called that in. They said, "Well, what about the site out there at Kenyaskew?" And then, and that struck, according to me, is making great sense. So we asked Robbie to take a look at what it might do cost-wise, what it might cost to football fields out there and how feasible it is and what it might save at the Edwah site if we didn't build it. It turns out it's about a million dollar net savings in his estimate. That's not from bid numbers, but that's the assessment we have there. It would, it would reduce the cost down at Edwah by about 3.7 million in his estimate to remove the baseball fields. Now that, one of the things you got to look at is what does that leave in? And that's one of the things they want to present to you. And it would cost his estimate only about 2.7 million to build better fields, really, bigger fields over at Kenyaskew site. So it sort of looked like a win-win. We could take that million dollars, you could take that million dollars and use it to restore features of the Edwah site that otherwise would probably have to be cut because of the, one of the most important elements that most people would talk about is the footbridge over the river to connect that park to Heritage and ultimately to bowling field training. And so, now the, the bad news, I guess, is the wish list, the features to be put back in is significantly more than a million dollars. So that's more decisions that you or somebody has to make. But anyway, to, to me, it looks like a win-win, but... I think we view that it's just primarily your choice, whether to do this at all, and then if so, what to do with the million dollar savings. And of course, if there's more than a million dollar savings, we would presume that it could be put back in. But I guess the concern I would have is just that, that somewhere we do meet what I feel is a commitment to build this baseball field, whether at Edwah or Kenyaskew or someplace else, it seems like we need to build, build fields. It's not like they're just fall through the cracks. So if you have questions for me, that's fine. I, I might ask for another moment when they're through to, to see if there's an opportunity to close the deal, if you will. I hope that'll happen tonight. I wish you would. But if you don't have something for me now, I'll turn it over to Robert.
I guess so. And I think we will. Hopefully, when you ask, you'll receive. But a question we, some of us talked about is, if you could explain to us what administrative costs are that come out?
It seems large. Well, because Rickels might do a better job of that, but for one thing, there's financing costs. That, I can give you a thumbnail, but I'm not going to be able to talk in full detail. We start with a $7 million budget. The financing and administrative costs, it includes, for instance, Miss Rickles's salary for the term of this program. Not all of it coming out of this, just a piece of it coming out of this budget, as well as out of every other budget. And the financing costs brought us down to six and a half. Then there's design fees, some of which have already been spent, some of which... Then there's design fees, some of which have already been spent, some of which are budgeted and continue to complete the design part, uh, and a contingency, which ultimately would be spent on this program, this project, uh, but Bill's reluctance to commit the contingency upfront. You know, if we get to the end and the contingency hadn't been spent, great, you know, we build the building we want to grow, and whatever it is that, that's available, we can use that money for. But that's kind of where we're down to, actually available for construction costs now, we believe is five point eight out of that seven million.
Could you explain the finance fees, because we were speaking with, uh, our financials and they...
In the bonds, we feel like we will be paying, when we're making our payments, that we will be paying, uh, principal plus interest, is that not the finance charge? Well, just like a mortgage, you pay principal and interest. We're gonna be doing the same thing on the park.
That's a good point.
And that's the finance charge. So, we, is the finance charge being counted twice?
I'm gonna doubt the question, I'm sorry to say, 'cause I really don't know the...
That's a lot of money.
And, and, um, right, Mr. Eccles can...
Please.
If you have anything else for me before he, and he can answer that.
No, but please come back and answer your final question.
I will. Okay, at this point, uh, Bill Eccles and, and Robbie Bryant will just kind of go over with you, what the Killian site looks like, as well as what the Etowah site would still have in, if we go to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, committee, and Mayor, and Mr. Wood, and council members, and the public. My name is Bill Eccles, I'm the Director of Capital Projects, and my charge working for the county is the administration and the management of the ninety million dollar park bond fund, uh, managing the, uh, the architects, uh, developing the specifications, the RFPs, uh, bidding, competitive bidding for the construction, putting all of that together, uh, basically program management services within the county. When, uh, I began looking at the broad scope of the, of the total ninety million dollars, I began to, to make an assessment of where the money was coming from within the allocations and where the projects were going. And the first thing I looked at in order to get to the administrative cost were those countywide administrative costs all across the entire ninety million dollars, so that it's not just coming from, from the Canton allocation, it's coming out of our projects as well as the other city projects. And one of the administrative costs that's, that's within there is a program-wide contingency, because I felt it was, it was prudent, it was, it was good fiscal management for us to hold a little bit of money back across the board for our administration of the, uh, of the ninety million dollar program. It is, it is, uh, my cost over a, over a five to six-year period, uh, with administration, uh, of, by me, a project manager that works with me, the accounting functions, the purchasing support, all of those things that go into a, a program management of a ninety million dollar bond program. So, so Councilman Huffman, it, it, it is all of those things that come off of Canton Seven, but it also comes off of our projects, across every project across the ninety million dollars.
Could you give us an estimate on one of the contingencies?
The contingency, I have a report that, that Mr. Bryant has handed out, and, and the first thing that when you look at that, the contingency that I took across the board was about a three percent contingency all across the board, and then allocated it as a percentage of, the two, the two hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars is the, uh, seven million dollar percentage of the ninety million dollars. And so, uh, you did not get a disproportionate, if, if the county were administering a seven million dollar project, which we have a couple of, we would also have subtracted that off of our allocation to...
I did not want to insinuate that we were getting, uh, taking advantage of it all, I just, we're interested in what the contingency amount may be, so at some time later, we can build something that we might not be able to do upfront.
That, that contingency has gone into, into the overall program, but within that allocation that is remaining below the, the four hundred and eight thousand dollars on administrative costs, I have also, as, as Commissioner Johnston mentioned, also have held out a budget for administrative, uh, architectural services that, that HBR is providing. There's also another internal contingency for the city of Canton Hughes, if it decides to increase or decrease or change the scope. I'm just, I'm just one of those guys that, that wants to get a little bit of contingency money to save us, so that when we get down the road, it's easier for me to say, "I didn't anticipate that, but I anticipated that we should have some money to allocate for it." So that it's, it's, at the end of it, if, if the worst I've got is a little bit of money to give back, I find it cheaper a little bit after.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, the three hundred and twelve, five percent recommended contingency, is still city money?
That is city money.
Yes, sir. So, uh, we get the...
Other parts of the park, projects, trails, bridge, whatever, built, and we say we want to put in playground equipment, that's where we can go back and dip into that.
Yes, sir.
So, in other words, you've already removed the savings in a little escrow account or whatever you want to call it, that contingency count.
Okay.
So, but, it will not fall back into the county's coffers?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and there are other things that, as we go for, not the borough account, the, the line of details, but as you go through there, there has been some other discussion about, should we, as a part of this project, improve the railroad crossing? We've, we've got a line item in there for the railroad crossing, for, for that. We've also got a little bit of money, uh, because part of this project, not only in Etowah, is the trails to bowling. And as we've discussed, there could be, there may be some additional costs, grants for the, for the city to obtain easements or rights of way for the bowling track, both the trails to bowling to be constructed, I've held some money back for that. So, if we, if the city can acquire all of those rights of ways and easements for the trails to bowling, again, this is very, that money flows back into the city to buy construction.
All right, so let me ask you, in the, uh, the beige or, yep, the orange colored land, it's, uh, one million, one hundred and ninety-two.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's after the, the construction, clearing land, grading, getting the park ready, and also building Kenny Askew baseball field.
And Robbie can present that.
Yes, sir.
What that means is that if you look up there, there's a revised Etowah River Park, which has a reduced scope down to about two million, but that, that is the reduced scope that Robbie can go over and explain too. The new Killian baseball complex is, is, uh, Mr. Johnston said it's about two point seven. That is a, that is a million dollars less than what the original scope for Etowah was going to cost.
And, did you put a contingency fund on that park?
It is, it is, right now, right now, we believe that that budget is probably, has a little bit of estimate contingency, but we still remember have that three hundred thousand up above that we can reach in if we need to improve.
Well, I read it looked like, uh, the park ball dunks were estimated at around two, two, uh, two point four billion, so there's three hundred thousand there. So, if it doesn't come in at three seventy-nine, we should have, so it comes in at two point five, that should be the money to flow back to the city.
And, and let me talk about how we're gonna bid. If you go back about a year or so, when we had some of the meetings talking about this, the way that we would like to, to move forward for the bidding of, of the, of the city of Canton Parks is that HBR would be the designer of the reduced Etowah for the new Killian, and that those would then become one set of contract documents that would be bid to one general contractor. And when we get those numbers on bid day, any amount of savings that, that is produced, we would also have that list of, of add alternates for the bridge, of, of a little under seven hundred thousand, going and instructing the trails to bowling to be in there. So, if, if we, if we bid both of those projects to the same general contractor, and we get a very good competitive bid for both of those parks at the same time, at that time, we will be able to, to, to work with the city to make a determination of, yes, there's enough savings to do a couple of alternates, and what alternates would y'all like? Would you like the bridge, or would you like to do the trails to bowling?
We're already looking at just a shade over a million dollars, by taking the two, the two parks.
Yes.
I haven't had them constructed, and we have a million. Okay. And then, the question again is, anybody's left out of those two constructions will be back to the city?
It, it, it remains with the city, it's not even flowing back to the city.
It remains in the city.
So, I gotta say.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, what I'm, remember, I have a hundred thousand dollars, I think, allocated, uh, in, in the numbers for some, oh, I had the fifty thousand dollars in there for, for the railroad. So, if we don't do the railroad, or the railroad costs twenty-five thousand, again, all that money flows, flows back in for, for that kind of...
Now, is there any addition, or maybe Robbie can say, any additional cost on plans that he's prepared?
Yes.
His, his costs are right up here, we're looking at it, that's it.
What you see is that there will be additional design services that are contained within the budget estimate that Robbie has worked up in HBR, because there will have to be a revised design fee for their redesign of Etowah and for the new design of Killian.
And we don't see that number down there.
It, it is, it is contained, it is contained within his cost estimate.
It's on the cost estimate.
Okay, so I'm in, looking at it.
The, the number you're looking at has that in there, and you can see the breakdown on the cost estimate in the back.
Okay. All right. So, I'm looking at that number, then I can say, I live with that number right now, and hopefully it stays there and won't goes down. Thank you. Let me ask you one other question. You're talking about a cafe type operation here, they can choose what we're gonna do. Two things we're gonna do, we're gonna build, of course, prepare ground for Etowah Park, clear it, get it set, ready to go, and that falls under the two hundred, two million, two point, two point one. And then, the baseball grounds is two point seven, okay? Then what we would like to propose, go ahead with that, I'm just saying, council's gotta make the decision, I'm just saying, go ahead with it. What I would like to have is, uh, five, five hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars for the trail between Heritage and Bowling, and start with that, and that will come out of our million that we had as the lower, that'd be the first shot. So, we get that trip going, that thing's been hanging in for fourteen years, and just get it going. We got the money, just say, just start breaking ground here, the plans are already here. Now, as we pointed out earlier, we gotta have the, uh, problems in some instances side off, but that's what, what I like to see, something takes place, starts to move the process. Is that possible, to be able to have that set up to do that?
Councilman... Yes, sir. What you've explained is, is a part of the bidding, bidding process and some of the stuff that I've asked for, because what, what I'm seeking tonight, or what we're seeking tonight, is direction from, from the Canton Council on, which way do you want us to go? Do you, do you, are you happy with the scope for the, for the Killian, or are you happy with the reduced? All I have to do is ask, this is, this is the question I get to ask, and the answer will, the answer will come from the council, because that direction will be necessary for me to be able to, to negotiate a, a fee adjustment with HBR, because I then have to take that to, to my elected, five elected officials in the Board of Commissioners to present, to approve that. And I know that their question will be, "Mr. Eccles, is this design revision in accordance with what the city council of Canton desires?" And I'll say, "Yes, sir, here's the resolution, Mr. Wood has given that to me, this is what we're gonna do." I then work with Robbie, and we design it, and we share it, we, we have a collaborative process going back and forth with the city, this is what we're doing as we move in along. We then take the bids, and let's say that I, that I have a savings of a million, two hundred thousand dollars, I've saved a little bit more money. I will then sit down with Mr. Wood and the mayor and say, "Okay, we've got a million dollars in savings, which alternates do you want?" And at that point, it will, it will be a question within the members of this council, you want X, somebody else wants Y, if there's not enough money to do X and Y. Therein lies the dilemma.
Question.
But, but that is our process, and then when I do that, I will then take that resolution and, and, and prepare my agenda item before the county commissioners, and say, "I recommend that the bid be awarded to this contractor in this amount, and alternates X and Y have been accepted." They will ask the question, "Is this what the city council wants?" And I'll say, "Yes, sir, I have a resolution that recommends this except."
Okay, let me throw a hypothetical question.
Yes.
What happens, believe it or not, if the council agrees to these two items, and say they would like to see the bowling park trails set, what would be a reasonable timeframe to turn that around and start it with digging the dirt?
From today?
Yep.
From, from today, I need, I, I, I figured that from today, getting the direction, negotiating with HBR and getting things designed, I'm probably looking at a six-month time period to get, get it reprogrammed, to get it fully designed, ready to go to bid. So, if we go six months from now, February, March, April, May, June, July, probably August or September, I'm ready to go to bid.
No, we will, we've been, as we say, playing with game for quite a while, and we have changed the pace, so if we're at fault, uh, you cannot speed a process in any way.
I, I would, I would much rather stand in front...
If you want, term versus short.
I would, I would much prefer to stand in front of, of, of council and citizens and the press, and tell you, "It's gonna take me six months and be back here in five," and to say, "I'm gonna be here in four," and I stumble and, and I'll be two months later. Again, I'd like to, I'd like to underpromise and overdeliver if that's a correct phrase, but, but I think six months is a, is a reasonable effort, Mr. Mayor, for us to beat that.
Question. We have as an estimate, two point seven three nine mil with Killian. What happens if it comes in at the bidding process of two point nine three nine? Does that mean we only have eight hundred thousand?
Yes.
So, we really don't know that these numbers are, uh, exact, these are just estimates, and doing a joint bidding, what control do we have over the waiting process of one part of the project to the other part of the project? As you know, in commercial construction, there's often a, a favoritism given to the mainstay, and the costs get put over to the subsidiary, the values.
You, you, again, have to explain the bidding process of what we're talking about. We, we have now come up with, and we believe that there will be a core base bid within the Etowah Park, there will be a core base bid within the, the Killian that will allow the contractors to place their overhead, their supervision, all of their expenses, and to hard bid at that base bid number to drive that price as low as possible, and we believe that competition will do that. The projects at both of these sites, the, probably a hard twenty-five to thirty percent is moving dirt, is, is, is dirt related, and there should be a lot of strong competition. I would expect probably no less than five to six very strong, capable contractors bidding for this in, in the secondary. My only hope is that, is that the competition drives it down so that that, my numbers are correct, so that I can offer as a part of that bidding cost, a million dollars for the selection of all of the other city counties. Can I guarantee that today? All I can tell you is that, is that Robbie and HBR have a complete set of documents for Etowah. They, they, they feel very confident in their experience of what Etowah is gonna cost and what's coming out. As you, as you look through the documents, there is a one-page colored drawing of what Killian is gonna look like. The two point seven million dollar estimate is based upon that single conceptual colored draw.
Yes, sir. As you flip to the next page behind it, what you, what you put in, and this is great, you put in the actual construction cost, and it's two point five, and then you put a ten percent contingency... And then you put a ten percent contingency overrides or anything else to make it go up to two point seven three nine. So the the question I think Mr. Cummings had is that, well, that that harder number is two point seven nine. Is the high end, and he's looking at, in today's numbers, two point five.
Yeah, well, when you get the actual bid, it could be two point nine two.
Oh, yes, sir, it could be, or it could be two point two or one point nine five, yes, sir. I I I don't know that, and we won't know that, because that that is always the dilemma that, if I can go back. When when the when the cities and with the county recreational park department were saying, how much should the bond program be? There was a lot of conceptual estimating estimating that made up the ninety million dollars. You know, the the memorandum of understanding with the city, between the city and the county, that there was an allocation of seven million dollars to build the city of Canton Park. Where did the seven million come from? I think it was a number that says that sounds reasonable, should be enough for us to build a park.
Hopefully, my final question for you. Let's lump the trails into parts as a construction bid.
As a base bid? No.
Bill, let me, let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question, why why you want those two together to begin with? Why I bid the this park over here, and what if the lowest bid that comes in is what it uses our our seven million dollars by? Especially since, you know, I'm I'm not sure they're connected in that respect in any other way.
Mayor, my my advice and my experience tells me that if I can bid both of those together, I have a larger amount of work that is being bid on by a general contractor. It makes it more attractive, makes it more, I believe, competitive. And if I bid them separately, I will not be able to allow the acceptance of an alternate, because I don't have the second bidding I have.
Bill, that's my point.
Yes, sir. But but let me let me talk about.
You said now, one hour, three.
Well, I I I am going to bid as the base bid, the reduced scope of Etowah and the new Killian. In that bidding document, I will also have the the menu or the of the cabinet, and it says, give me a price, Mr. Contractor, for the trails to bowling. Give me a price for the bridge over in Etowah, give me a price for alternate three, four, and five. I will have the base bid, and if you add all the alternates up, will tell us what all of the work will cost. My goal, my competitive bidding strategy plan is to get, again, that strong base bid. So that the so that the overhead and the expenses and the management of the project are in the core. So that the addition of the bridge is a cost only, because there's no more management or supervision, because the general contractor has his trailer and his operations already set up. That drives, I hope and believe, the cost of that bridge down to what would could be referred to as a straight pass through of the bridge cost. Without a bunch of auxiliary or ancillary cost, it's just the true cost of that work. But when I take the bids on that day, I will have a bid for the bridge, I will have a bid for the trails to bowling, I will have a bid for the other alternates. And if I can get the base for Killian and the reduced scope for Etowah low enough so that I have a million, or more than a million, or maybe less, depending. I will then have that surplus or that savings of money to present to the city for your decision of what alternates do you want to select and award to the contractor.
So we're six months out before we come back with the alternatives?
Well, I know what the alternative are now, they're designed, they're fully designed.
Yeah, I know, I got.
But I but I have to.
Right, I understand. Go ahead.
No, no, I I I this 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 is the this is the part of us bidding it to get to get the savings for you. But but I but I, let me explain again, if I bid only the reduced scope of Etowah, it's roughly only a two million dollar project.
No, I I agree with you.
Okay, okay.
The two of them should go together.
Yes, and I agree.
Okay, I want to tag on, I want to show the citizens here in Canton that after all this long waited activity, we're doing something. And we've delayed it two years. And again, city did it, county did it, city did it, so I'm not throwing any rocks.
Don't, I understand, I hear what you're saying, is that you want the trails to bowling to be a part of that base bid, not just to add off. And if that is the pleasure of the city of Canton, we are we are off in line.
I just answered. We 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 make a recommendation to the council when it comes up.
I just did, so can you do? We, yes, we, we can certainly, you're bidding any way you want to.
One additional question on that, get down to this, if on the trail, does it have to be A D A, the trail material?
If 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 it is a if it's a soft trail, it's not going to be A D A defined?
It'll still be A D A.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, if it has A D A, isn't it a soft surface?
Right.
Does it have to be, or can it be something else that would be less cost?
I don't think it necessarily has to be more expensive to be A D A. I mean, it just, you can have a compacted gravel surface that's still A D A. If it's a public trail, it should be accessible, not kidding.
Bill, so so everyone knows here, the proposed reduced scope includes the soccer and football, lacrosse, or whatever that is, it is.
Don't make a break of that Robbie's play. I did a masterful job of confusing everybody.
Just want to make sure everyone understands what what the reduced scope is and what we would be getting with this. I also understood that there was going to be a, was going to look and see if you could get at least one longer field over at Killian, is that right?
We we've looked at that, I, only only because I I have knowledge. Mr. Lattimer, I understand, one of the reasons he's here, is that there has been some discussion amongst the the very many, many folks on on Dizzy Dean. And I believe that they have come to a an understanding or a consensus that the smaller fields work for them, and Mr. Lattimer may even have a suggestion that betters the four fields.
Yeah, actually, we do, and and I think, once the redesign was done on the the larger field, and I don't know what the budget numbers were, or which which way it was. But we could actually get five fields in for about the same budget number as the public one. And it would serve basically, this this park would serve seventy percent at the park, so.
In my understanding, Mayor and council and and everyone, when we looked at Killian, we looked at at several options and alternates with with the terrain. And Robbie came up with the four two hundred and fifty fields. There was a request that came to us that said, could we add or make one of those four fields a three, a three fifty feet? When we did that, that that going to making one of those four fields three hundred and fifty feet. Added about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the cost of Killian that comes, it subtracts all of the million. So now the million is gone, two fifty, now we're down to seven hundred and fifty. We looked also at, well, then there was a discussion, we understood, well, no, we need a fifth field. And and adding that fifth field at three hundred and fifty added another five hundred thousand. And why is that? Because because the elevation differences of where the fifth, the the fifth field would be, it's almost forty to fifty feet difference in elevation. And with that difference, you need more parking, you need a second concession, you're moving a lot more dirt. And so with that, we had some discussions offline, back channel, with with Dizzy Dean, with Mr. Lattimer and and some of his folks. That one of the suggestions that's come up now, Robbie, why don't we just go through it, if if there's some discussion on that, Mayor? With the field. What we understand, and some of the discussion is that if we kept two of the two fifty fields. Then what we could do is to is to is to fit in this other half, three hundred and seventy-five foot baseball fields. And that that would better serve the day in and day out, Dizzy Dean kids, that Mr. Lattimer and his folks want to serve on a day in, day basis. We understand that the belief of why three fifty was requested was to host tournaments. And I think Dizzy Dean internally has decided that on a day in and day out basis, if I'm if I'm not stepping stepping ahead or stepping on it. That's basically what they would like to see is two two fifties and three one seventy-fives. We believe that that may cost a little bit more, a little bit more than the four fields, but less than the the three, the three fifty. So if it adds fifty to seventy-five thousand, we're not, we're not getting too deep into that million dollars. And when we get through and get looking at it again, Robbie is doing estimates off of off of colored sheets of paper. And I applaud him for his ability to do the conceptual estimate, which is difficult at this stage. It affects fencing, it affects sod, it affects irrigation, it affects lighting, all of those things. But that's one of the things that that we're looking at is the where the fields need to be, what is the configuration number of those fields, is is the direction area that we see from the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Eccles, Mr. Eccles?
Yes, yes.
Could you ask Mr. Lattimer if if he would tell us what dimensions they found and come up with? Because I know they were talking about that, and you you all were talking about different dimensions. And one time I heard you all say that you thought maybe the older ones would be over at Killian, and the younger ones over there. So I just was wondering what you all think you need most. Could you explain that a little bit more, Council?
Well, basically, we would have about eight hundred kids that this this park here would serve. The majority of our of our kids in our park are are twelve and under. Twelve and under would play on the two fifty foot fields, down to nine years old. Also, on the two hundred and fifty foot fields, we could serve our thirteen to fourteen year olds. The three hundred and fifty foot field was a thought because of of the the thirteen through nineteen year old age group, which, you know, usually is around two hundred and fifty kids. We we deal with about twelve hundred kids in the spring and about eight hundred and fifty kids in the in the fall. So it's a cumulative of over two thousand kids during the year that we're dealing with. But with with doing this, and I actually am a general contractor, so I've I've played with some numbers on it as well. And with with doing this concept of doing, you would have five fields on this same level that Mr. Eccles was talking about. Whereas the fifth field would have to go down, we would have, we would be on the same surface with these five fields. And 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 in that in that rotation up on the up on the main park, rather than being four, it would be five. And it fits in there, it fits in there nice. With the three hundred and seventy-five foot fields, you end up with less fencing, less turf, you know, less maintenance across the board. The the smaller fields don't have to be lit from from the outfield, so you don't end up with with the lighting poles. I don't know if that's way to 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 show you guys, but on the bigger fields, you have to have outfield lighting poles. And on the smaller fields, you can light it for the size, and so your lighting costs come down. So ultimately, we can, we can probably get the five fields in there, from from my calculations. At the budget that they're speaking of are probably less than because of the amount of turf, the amount of fixing, and the amount of lighting. That's what that's what drives the cost of these fields up.
Which one?
Yes, sir.
What budget are they talking about? I just heard.
We've had the two point seven million dollar budget, I guess, for Killian.
Two point seven?
Yes, sir.
So, put in there what you want for two point seven, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I I may be speaking out of turn, I'm I'm requesting what would best suit the kids of of the city of Canton, for for Canton baseball.
I understand that, also.
I'm speaking out of turn for that.
No, no, I understand, but he mentioned that additional cost to bring it up to what you were proposing.
That was that was what, I'm I'm interrupting again here, that was what was was thought of originally. But then when you look at it, and and as far as the lighting and stuff goes.
Here's here's the interesting, I'm going to, I'm going, Mr. Lattimer has promised he's going to bid on this project, and go see what his numbers are. And I believe what his numbers are tonight, and I hope to see those good numbers in six months.
Now, two months, bids, then let's get, okay.
I ask, one more question.
Yes, sir.
You're saying there's two two fifty fields and three one seventy-five, or is there one three fifty?
Yeah, yeah, this is, I guess, this is, but ultimately, on on this concept that we've come up with, is two two hundred and fifty foot fields and three one hundred and seventy-five foot fields. And I think Robbie said he had played with the numbers on it, and they definitely fit. And it would be in that same layout, but it may rotate a little bit because of the walkways, the way the walkways come up and tie into the parking lot. And the way they tie into the trail going down, can you ask, is that correct?
That's it, thank you. This puts restrooms, this puts concession, this puts everything up on this complex, there's no number on here, but it's, again, it falls under two point seven.
Yes, sir.
On this list with your scoreboards and the whole.
Yes, sir, there should be a, in your package, just in front or behind that page, that shows the graphic of the two hundred and fifty foot fields. There should be a written narrative that describes this scope, so that the line item, so that's included. And then in addition, there's a cost estimate that's detailed out, and included, so now it's, so you can see everything that's included here. It's basically everything that's shown on this graphic, it's a few, about six hundred feet of entry road, two hundred and forty parts of spaces, so they're paved, curving dirt. Showing four two hundred and fifty foot fields, that's what we did to take off from, it's about a hundred thousand cubic yards of earthwork. We did rough grading on the site, from G I S contractors, it's not engineered yet, but is educated yet. And then we have connecting walkways that we're, can you ask you, and connected sidewalks to the parking area, and even a detention facility. That's that's everything that's included in, can you ask you, the site.
Question. I think the answer of Mr. Beresford's point, there's no way that you would ever conceive of being off by forty-five percent between the available for alternatives, the budget for alternatives, and the cost of doing the trails. In other words, the available would never go below what it's needed to do the trails, is that a fair assessment?
Never say never.
Yeah, well, I know.
We try to be, with the numbers we provided, I mean, we're not trying to cut everything as low as we can. We use at basically conceptual level numbers that are higher than finished construction drawing or bid numbers that we anticipated. So we use higher number, and we put a contingency on it on top of that. So I think it's, we're trying to be safe with the numbers, we're trying not to show you that you get more than we think you would actually get. That's why, even doing it that way, you've got the million dollar shopping, plus the contingency, plus the, you know. But nobody can say for sure until we get contractor bids back.
Robbie, have you put in this additional charges for changing this?
Well, that is not engineered, actually, so there wouldn't be no additional charge to design it with this one hundred and seventy-five foot field or two fifty or three fifty, really. I mean, I think we'll design it whatever way you guys want us to go. And as far as cost impact, if you went to a three fifty foot field from the two fifties, I think that is initially. But if you go from the two fifties to the smaller fields, like Toby mentioned, it's less fencing, it's less sod, and it's less light holes. So you're, I don't think you're dealing with, you know, more money at all on that.
Robbie, could you could you switch over to the other reduced site plan, please, and make sure everyone is, understands exactly what would be the base bid there?
Alright, what this, everybody's familiar with the the improved Etowah River Master Plan. The construction drawings that have been permitted include everything on that master plan. Now, this plan, when you look at it, it's it's scaled back, and that's what we call it, the reduced Etowah River, reduced plan. But everything that is not circled in red is in that base bid. There's quite a few items.